Now look at it there, boy. Can't get fresher than that?
Can't get fresher than that.
I know, right? Straight out of Mon Repose Market into the pot. Can't get better, boy. Nice Korean rice there. How the food work? You are good?
Nice Korean rice.
Massive? Big things to go on there, so. Black Bay? This is the opening party for the boat, for the new boat, alright? One of the opening, yes.
You're the reason everybody comes to Guyana.
Wow, thank you, thank you, thank you so much.
You were the whole tourism. Yeah, yeah.
No problem.
And we went to Sunny and Sweetie because of you. We went to
Went to the Don Curry guy yesterday.
Jagi Shokori Eskimo.
Yes.
Now look at this here, boy, wow. When you're cooking, you're cooking. Look at that. The smell is tantalizing. How you doing, man? Yeah. The smell is good, tantalizing. Tea is good. If it smell good, it gotta tea is good. Hello. Can I pass, mate? Thank you.
Yeah, let's go to GDF.
GDF, we got the police across there.
Yeah, we're doing meteum and fried fish.
Meteum and fried fish? And they got the black eye cook up and the beef cook up?
Yeah.
Lovely, lovely.
It's a feature of the park, it's a feature of the park.
Ah no, the smell tantalizing me with the smell here right now. Wow, so we got some fish fingers there. Ah look it off there. Look at that, boys. How can life get any better than this? Another beautiful sunny day here in Georgetown, Guyana. Miss Lynch and I, we're heading up the east coast on another adventure. We have some fans to meet at Grand Coastal Hotel. We got into Mon Repose by the market. We got team of Captain Black Bay. The man made a brand new boat, you know? Hope you guys are doing okay, you're being fun and positive. Look at all the fruits, my friend. Show them all these nice fruits.
Hi, you have sow what's up?
Morning, morning.
Sow what's up? Um, it's a name season or something?
No, no, not happening.
Oh, alright, thank you.
Do you want to look at my channel? Do you look at YouTube?
Not really.
Now you're gonna be a YouTube star, can you make a YouTube video, right? Your boss lady know my channel, man. Let she tell you the channel, A R D, alright? Pleasure meeting you.
Take care.
Have a good day, have a great weekend. Join us and let's begin the adventure. Now look, I run into a fan here. Made a stop by the UG left Correa Airport. Running into two super fun here, man. What's your name?
I'm Shannon, yeah.
And you're from Yupukari?
Yupukari, yeah.
Rupununi?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Alright.
I sometimes watch your stuff and it's pretty good.
Thank you, man. You wanna say hello to anybody?
Ah, not really.
Cool, alright, brother. Pleasure meeting you, man. And this man here is another big fan, boy. What's his name?
Mike Williams, security.
Mr. Williams, the security here, keeping things safe down here. You wanna say hello to anybody?
It's okay, man, it's okay.
Appreciate it, brother. Pleased to meet you, alright?
One love.
Yeah, man, one love, yeah, cool. And down here, by Grand Coastal. And this place rocks. It's nice. Hello. This place is beautiful, trust me. As you enter, there is a little bar right by the pool. Man, over here. Hi, hi, pleased to meet you. How y'all doing? Hello, hello, we got some fans here as well. So, come to, come to. Across in here, it's a little dining area, a little hall. And look at this here, a lot, a lot more folks down here, you know, dining. And a lot of dining, um, accommodation. So this place is rock. How are you doing? Good morning? How?
How are you?
Can life get any better than this? Life can't get better, right?
Life can't get better than this.
Pleased to meet you, alright.
Nice to meet you too.
Hey, what's up, my friend? Alright, man, nice meeting you, man. Same here, man.
So anxious.
Same here. Life could never get better, buddy. Let me call you right hand side, man. How can life get better than this? Life could never, life could never. Big fun, big fun, huh? Alright.
How can life get better than this?
Could never get, could never get. Where you, where you guys and guys from?
Jersey City.
Jersey City in the house.
Toronto.
Toronto? Wow, wow.
Jersey City in the house.
And Toronto.
Yes.
Can't get better indeed. So anxious to see you, brother. Man, appreciate, man. You guys were The greatest. Thank you. Y'all wanna say hello to anybody? No problem.
Say hello.
Oh, hello, Canadians, Torontonians. Alright. Having fun in Guyana? No problem. Sure, man.
Well, I wanna shout out to my sister Sheila and husband who lives off of this A R D show.
Wow.
He don't watch movie anymore. That's the only thing he wants in life and he was trying to pop. Circumstances.
Yeah, yeah.
Couldn't make it.
I hope I get to meet you soon. Both of you, both of you guys, yeah.
Jersey City.
Sheila and
Bob.
Bob.
From Jersey City.
From Jersey City. I hope I get to meet you soon, alright?
Yes, next year.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Who else here want anybody that's wanna say hello? Shout out to my buddies.
And to my brother.
All my Guyanese buddies, it's like my dream come true, alright? God bless. No problem.
And most we love you, wish you was here. And also wanna say hello to Danny, Derek and Tony. And also my brother, Andre Bactoar.
No problem, man. So, how can life get better than this? Life can. Y'all enjoying?
You're the reason everybody comes to Guyana.
Wow, thank you, thank you, thank you so much.
You were the whole tourism. Yeah, yeah.
No problem.
And we went to Sunny and Sweetie because of you. We went to
Went to the Don Curry guy yesterday.
Jagi Shokori Eskimo.
Yes.
Went there yesterday.
Wow, wow, wow. You guys having a great time?
At Abu Huli Island.
Abu Huli?
Yeah.
Yeah. Jagi Shokori like you, man. Hey, no, Jagi Shokori got the best Shokori, alright?
And we had all the curry. Every Friday, every day.
Lovely, lovely, man. I'm happy. All because of me, no problem. Watch your videos. I traveled 15 hours just to go eat your Don Curry. Wow! And it's well worth it. Worth it, okay.
And also you're so kind, like thanks for taking the time.
No problem. Thank you. How about this hotel? Y'all like this hotel, Grand Coastal?
Oh, we love it. We stay here all the time. Like I stay here all the time.
Lovely, beautiful. Was a pleasure, was a pleasure meeting you all and do enjoy the rest of your tour here, alright?
Thank you.
Alright. Now this, my good buddy here, Dr. G. Alright, and you say you got a message.
Yeah, first of all, life can't get any better than this. Coming to you live from the Grand Coastal Hotel.
Yes.
Often implicated and never duplicated. Jay, aka Omar, and my man Danny Boy.
A R D here.
Uh, we living the life up. Vacation's almost over.
Man.
Probably, uh, two pounds.
Heavier.
With my no mini two week food baby, which I hopefully worked off. But we're having a blast here. This is a man, he inspired me to just keep chasing my dreams and keep doing my thing.
Yes.
And, uh, we got nothing but love for this guy. He's our family now.
Indeed.
Showing some respect.
Show me some love, man, alright? So you're having a great time here in Guyana?
It's a blast.
Wow, so you're gonna come again soon?
Absolutely, yeah.
And you say you'll find a Guyanese girl, a bride down here?
Um, equal opportunity employers, so. Accepting applications right now.
Malak, yeah, so young ladies. Y'all need a husband, he's a doctor, alright?
He's too much.
So if you need a doctor, you need a husband, this man is single, alright? And he's taking an application. Life can't get better than this here.
That's right, and luck has nothing to do with it.
Luck has nothing to do with it, you see that? Was a pleasure meeting you, man, alright?
You too, brother.
Can't get better, man, can't get, can't get better, alright. I wanna say a special thank you to all those guys there at the, um, Grand Coastal Hotel. My man Jay and his lovely mom, Dolly. Also to Shanta and Andre Bactoar. From Jersey City, who have a business in Clifton, New York. Quality Foreign Car Care. I wanna thank you to you guys, big up to you all. My girl Anne from Anne's House of Beauty at Bushlat Farm Quarantine Barbees. If you wanna look beautiful like Miss Lynch, then check out Anne's Beauty House.
I'm gonna go.
Bushlat Farm Quarantine Barbees. And you can find these guys on Facebook or Google, alright? And to my boy, Brodo. All the way from Canada. Speedy Auto Service in Brampton, Queen Street, Brampton, Canada. My boy Brodo from, um, Speedy Auto Service, y'all check on him on there, alright? And all these guys made contribution to the less fortunate people in Guyana. Which I'm gonna channel to Northwest District, you know, the less fortunate folks there. The Warrows. The people in, um, Imbertero and Smith Creek along the bank. So I wanna say a special thank you to you guys and to my girl Dolly as well. And to your lovely husband and your son. We made our way to Mon Repose. I gotta pick up some patchoni, you know? My partner boy already secure it and have it already from here, so just gotta pick it up. I roll in down the agriculture road here, and this is another hotel in case y'all need. Hotels in Guyana. Caribbean Inn. 592 220 4812. Right here, you can get these guys here, you can stay here, this is Mon Repose Village, alright? Couldn't get any better than this here, boy. Passing through the Mon Repose Market area here, boy. 12 o'clock, you know? So the market already
Right greens, man.
Marsh up, Miss Lynch among greens. Bring up board the market, man. The ma- market look nice? The fruits look nice? Yeah darling, the fruits are always nice in Guyana. See that? I headed to the sea wall. Captain Black Bay already gone out there with the curry, you know, gotta go and lash somebody curry. And look, Miss Lynch knocking some baked unsal fish from Grand Coastal Hotel. How it taste? Proper? Alright.
Compliments from Dolly.
The girl Dolly herself, yeah.
Dolly and Jay. Thank you very so much.
Yeah, the food good, the bacon's nice, fish nice. But I got him on that curry up here.
Curry?
Yeah darling, Black Bay got some curry and ricey. Alright, so, that boy's lashing there, that boy's doing a thing there, man. Can't get better than this. This is the boat I built. Now look at it there, boy. Can't get fresher than that?
Can't get fresher than that.
I know, right? Straight out of Mon Repose Market into the pot. Can't get better, boy. Nice Korean rice there. How the food work? You are good?
Nice Korean rice.
Massive? Massive, nice book, Korean rice here, boy. You are good?
Good, good.
So Black Bay can cook?
Black Bay can cook, any captain they put there, they can cook.
They can lava cook, yeah. I know, right? Me training now, but the man don't cook long, it's 30 years the man walking in the sea. So you gotta know for cook, if you're walking in the sea. You gotta know to cook, yeah? Can you own a chef there, you gotta cook yourself? Exactly. So, everybody gotta learn to cook on the boat, trust me. Again, lash somebody Korean rice, you know? Can't get better than this here. Now, look what we're in here, boy. A moment ago, I tell you all, hey, the 7 degree. Look at it now. Rain like crazy. And it's still here, and now it's 8 to 9 degree even though it raining. Wow. Black Bay, showing up the party here right now, you know? Hurricane, boy? Hurricane, hurricane, I said hurricane happening right now? Land breeze. We getting land breeze and rain. Land breeze mean the wind coming from the southern direction, from the land, going to the ocean, like going that way. That's the ocean out here. So the fisherman call it land breeze. Too much of rain, boy, like we got call off today, what, huh? Boss man, we got call off today, what, you know? We got think for call off, we got reasons to call off. We got reasons to call off work today, trust me. Let the party begin. Everything we got here, we done got the ration. And now, big things to go on there, so. This is the, um, the opening party for the boat, for the new boat, alright? One of the opening, yes. Yeah, and as the company grow bigger, larger, there'll be many more openings. Many more openings, alright? So we got the boat builders here, we got the crew. The fishing crew as well, so it's time to party. And we got stocks and we got ice. Life can't get better than this here, boy. Yeah, life can't get better. I know when the boats start work, ice, you get better. Lovely, lovely. Let's show you all the skies. The rain and the wind subsided somewhat. The rain still drizzling, but look at that dark cloud out there, boy. I don't know what's going on right now. Alright? That's Brazil down that side. And that's Suriname, so I know right now Suriname getting rain or storm as well as Brazil down that side, alright? Now Venezuela is this side or northwestern border. Alright? So it's the entire skies black here now, in Guyana. The whole world dark except for that point there, a part of Brazil. Or the people at Orellana. I'm not sure what's gonna be the result at the African Heritage Celebration there today on La Maha Street. But I headed this soon, let's check it out, alright? And look, them boys get two more boats building there right now, boy. These guys are working really fast. They can get a boat in two weeks. Alright? These boys know their stuff, Tony. Know his stuff. I'm back in Georgetown. The weather kinda cool. The rain subsided. Alright, there are some clouds. But I hope it don't fall. I'm on the La Maha Embankment. You know? It is transformed into a beautiful walkway now. You can come here and jog and walk and sit down, picnic, you know? Enjoy the afternoon, the mornings. Across here, I have the 704 Sports Bar, you can, you know, if you wanna watch cricket and other things on the middle floor here. And they have hotel, I've seen an hotel across there, the pink building. That's on Albert Street, that is Albert Street right there. And up ahead there, the continuation of the La Maha Embankment, we have the African Cultural Fiesta going on down there and there, since 3 o'clock they announced they're starting. I'm here since 3, but, um, I haven't seen a lot of folks you know, show up as yet, you know, we as Guyanese. Dave Martin, the famous Dave Martin sing a song. He said Guyanese get paid from 12, but we start to work at 1. It's traditional. So even though it's 3 o'clock, people gonna start show up here by 5 o'clock. So I'm gonna sit around a little. Now it's 3:30, another half an hour, I'm gonna walk through there and show you guys you know, what's happening over there, alright? I guess I talk too early about the weather, the rain start drizzling now. Hello? The rain starts to drizzle, so I'm gonna make that walk through 50 minutes earlier than I had intended to. Alright? One Guyana, government of Guyana. It's a cultural festival. It's Heritage Month, it's, you know, African Heritage Month. You know, I have a see the steel pan folks pass through earlier. So we can get a steel pan playing and you know, other cultural events you will see. Oh, enough, I see. So over here. 1823 Demirara Revolt. So we had a revolt in 1823. That's, we had my coffee, I think, right? 1823? You got some drum in there. That boy setting up some pokes, as I've been there, man. Alright, so you have all the different all the crafts and, you know, arts, sculptures. You know, the bottles and the chums and things decorated. More beads. Here we have some refreshment. Mabi, yes, sorel. Yeah, yeah. And look, my friend here. How can life get better than this, boy? Life can't get better than this, boy. Good to see you, man. My lover, brother. Hey, what's up, man? Pleased to meet you, man. Hello.
Hi, hi.
And look, my friend here, the wine man, boy. If you ain't got a jamun wine in your refrigerator, you ain't got nothing good. Wine man, what going on? Good to see you again, boy. Alright, here you can get some books. And you know, on the history of the African culture. Was a pleasure meeting you. You say you are the curator?
Yes.
And the National Gallery of Art and Culture, and that one new word I learned, curator. That's a man who takes care
Never too old to learn.
Never too old to learn something, and what, what, what do you do there? As a curator?
As a curator, we take care of the national patron. I have a staff that, um, we are trained, specially trained. They take a ways to care for fine art.
Yes.
Painting sculptures and graphic cards and so on.
Beautiful.
And the National Gallery of Art is open to the public for anybody, anytime.
Lovely, lovely. And you're right opposite the office of the president. By the, next to the home, Stretch Avenue, and, um...
It's next to 766.
But Mr. Coffee?
Right.
Got you. Pleasure meeting you, man.
See you.
My lover, yeah. I will come there some good day.
Sure.
Alright. Museum of African Heritage. You can find these guys too, in the air. Really are, right? Department of Culture, of Social Cohesion, Culture, Youth and Sport. Not sure, opening hours Monday, but you can find them on, on, um, Google. Museum of African Heritage, alright? Check this place out as well. You wanna learn something about this rich culture. Alright, so you got a lot of sculptures here, man. Wow, steel pan, is it police steel pan? Totally I see them by his path, by earlier. I said no. Of course, can't go wrong well without wetting your throat, you know? We gonna drink water and mind your business there, boy. Alright? And in case y'all need windows and doors and shutters and all things to do construction, it over the house, check them out by them on Yuffie Trading. Hey, hey, my friend, how are you? Check them out by Yuffie Trading across there, right? The man Jongui. Right at the corner of La Maha and Light Street. Our next door to the Jagan Dental Center. Well, we used to got a Treasure Island Restaurant, but they're no longer in, um, operation. Good food, you know, I enjoyed eating the food back in the days. So later on, this place gonna come alive, man, get big session here. See the stage here, a lot of performers gonna be here. And I heard a steel pan playing down the end there. But just the, just the rain drizzling, boy, so let me make my walk through earlier. Alright? And some cooking going on here, look what going on, the back here, cook up rice competition, I guess. I gotta check this out, boy. Once fireside and Kahari there, so may I interest it. Alright? So I guess, this probably is the cook up rice competition. Let me see from the front here, is what really going on? I tell you, that to be the cook up rice Guyana police force cook up car now. Hello? Is it a competition or? Oh, it's not a competition. Got you. So people, we gotta eat, you know, and we gotta get cook up rice. Now look at this here, boy, wow. When you're cooking, you're cooking. Look at that. Red beans cook up we got there. They got some nice raffles going in the, um, pot there, you know? Wow. Look at that. The smell is tantalizing, how you doing, man? Yeah. The smell is good, tantalizing. Tea is good. If it smell good, it gotta tea is good. Lovely. And there's a mixture, a meat there.
Yeah, there's the mix.
Beef and pork.
And tripe and chicken.
Chicken food. This the best one. Is it on sale later on or? For everybody, lovely, lovely. Can't look a pass from back, you know, can't miss out on that. What we got here now, what you have? This is fried rice?
Red beans.
It's red.
Red beans.
Red beans. This is red beans across here too.
With chicken.
With chicken, this is it all. Beef one, no it all. Yeah? The mixed one, the full work. I interested in this one on this car, on this side. This is a nice one. Nice, yes, yes, the full works. It smell good, it's, but y'all y'all doing well, y'all doing well here, smelling good. Alright. Beautiful, man. Can't get any better than this here, boy. And that's, that's we signature tradition Guyana, you know, cook up rice. Alright?
Let me finish, cook and we sharing it up.
Good, I gotta stick around right down here. I ain't going too far, right? Alright. And then across here, we got some more things. Some more cooking going across here. Hello. Can I pass, boy? Thank you.
Yeah, let's go see G D F.
See, oh, G D F, so we got the police across there.
Yeah, we're doing metamind fried fish.
Metamind fried fish. And they got the black eye cook up and the beef cook up.
Yeah.
Lovely, lovely.
It's a fish in the pot, it's a fish in the pot.
Ah, no, the smell, y'all tantalizing me with the smell here right now. I ain't coming back, I staying right here. You gotta be smart if you living in Guyana. I am taking a chance to pass back, I staying. Wow, so we got some fish fingers there. And look, look the dough there. Look at that, boy. Proper, proper thing. I ain't going nowhere, stay right here. And this the, this the dough, the dumplings or the dough making there right now. Wow. Beautiful, man. And this food is compliments to the folks here who wanna taste. I was just advised. And we have the G D F now, the Guyana Defense Force. Steel pan, pan. And we have another one setting up here. We have a, we have several steel pans, you know? So over here you can buy some bottles and you can buy some other things. I guess it's souvenirs. I hope the rain don't fall and my shop just lime, you know? Look at this place. We got some food, we got some maabi. Food in if you wanna get some. Can't get better, my buddy, you know, we're not. Alright, there comes the sunshine, which is much needed here right now, much appreciated. And you could walk all the way down to High Street. And we wanna believe about Camp Street, that's where you have um G R, we have their office there. Then you go beyond that. On the other side of Camp Street, you can go all the way down to High Street there. Fixing it up, so you can walk from Visiting Road now, all the way down to um Parade Street now, I think. And later on, you're gonna make it all the way down to High Street. Beautiful, man, beautiful. About a thing. Every little thing is gonna be alright. Rise up this morning, come soon, come soon, it's alright, it's alright, darling. Rising sun, key little bird. Oh, y'all do it. This a male or a female?
Unisex.
Oh, unisex. Okay, what do you class for one there? What's the price?
Three thousand. Different color.
Look at the different color. Now, I all decked out in my outfit, alright? And I got it right there from these brothers here, alright? Pleasure, pleasure meeting you all once again. And you usually be on Main Street.
Yeah.
And also you will find you here. That's, next time is that? Okay, and the phone number is six eight four three four five four. Alright, the pleasure seeing you again, alright? Thank you. Alright. So I got my outfit, my sarinade in the crowd there, alright? Miss Ren, she gonna come and take you all. I will invite you. This cook up and this metamind here couldn't get any better. The smell is tantalizing, trust me. In the meantime, these guys are setting up their steel pans. You would have seen them play at um Emancipation Day at the National Park. It's true, they play there, they plays a really good tune, alright? Look at that, right into a fan here, man. And you say a friend saw you in the show?
Yes, he saw me.
What's your friend name?
His name is Kafra. Hi, Kafra.
Alright. Pleasure meeting you, alright?
Pleasure meeting you.
And this one, this steel pan player, boy, what going on, my buddy?
I'm good, I'm good.
Life can't get better than this here, boy. Y'all doing a good job, Nick. I can't wait to hear y'all play this, alright?
It's the same band from Emancipation Day.
Yeah, I remember somebody folks them. You and the girls there, red girls, remember you guys playing at Emancipation?
Yes, it's the same band.
Yeah, pleasure, man, pleasure meeting you, alright? The vibes still going on here. I trying to upload a video right now. A little sneak peek for you guys. While I continue to celebrate with every other guy in these areas. Two hundred years later, today marks two hundred years since our first slavery revolt in eighteen twenty-three. Was the first revolution, the first revolt that we had by our forefathers fighting for freedom. And today, we can proudly say we are free. Yes, we are free. If our forefathers didn't pave the way for our freedom, maybe we would have still been slaves to this date, alright? But we must give thanks and praise to them, we salute them, all our forefathers who fought for our freedom. I knew the struggle was real back then. The struggle is still real now. Banga Mary? I want to visit Monropo Market, the bank of Hong Kong by her, Meru Bank, what have? Continue to celebrate and to, you know, enjoy the cuisine, you know, and the rich culture here. Of course, while you're here, you listen to some, to some nice steel pan music. And don't forget you can buy your African outfit. From the corner there. One bar there, boy. Don't worry about a thing. Look, I have a fan here from Jamaica. What's your name?
White.
You're white? You're living in Jamaica?
I live in Jamaica, Jamaica, I'm not in Canada.
So you have three countries, man, lovely. You wanna say hello to anybody back in Jamaica or Canada?
Oh, my daughter in Jamaica, Johnny May.
Johnny May in Jamaica, your daughter. Look mama here with me. You're supposed to be in Guyana with us. Pleasure meeting you, alright? One love, yes. The celebration continues, man, the place warming up. Now, look how many more folks are out here. Look at that. So many, so many folks are out here now. When I came here, three o'clock this afternoon, which is two hours and forty-five minutes ago, only a couple of us were here. And look at it now, man. Beautiful as can be. I am back. Did cook up done or the cook done is not already? The cook done, gun? Now the cook up done, I ain't yet done. I can come back next year. Don't worry, don't worry, it's alright, sir. I can come back next year, don't worry. All late, the food eat so sweet, the food done. Nice, alright, this I see y'all in the parking lot, I started across, it was, sorry, that's alright, don't worry. The cook up eat so nice, finish in no time, alright? So the meals are complimentary while it lasts, alright? So we got more things boiling over there, man. You have soup here if you want, if you want to call it a soup itself, alright? Which is nice, you know, you come here and enjoy some African cuisine. Let me, let me take you all for a walk down this side. So up here, they're gonna be having some singing and thing, man, going on here, right? A fellow setting up payment.
One, two.
A big thing going on here later on.
Don't panic, don't panic.
Big singers, Guyanese singers, I hope my girl Portella Lewis got invited for this show. That is a talented young lady, our Guyana's Whitney Houston. I hope she got recognized for this event. She's the one that sing Guyana's gold, beautiful song. Oh, yeah, yeah, this is our queen, our Caribbean culture queen. Pleased to meet you. Congratulations. You did us proud and I'm proud of you. Yes, I see her came back recently to Guyana. Welcome home, alright? This is our queen right here, our cultural queen, alright, Caribbean, alright? All the musicians standing back here. You know, them fellas warming up there, man. Come up on stage and do that thing, you know? Singing and drumming and singing, man. Dancing, everything gonna go on at the top here. Yeah, the evening slipping away, I hope some of you guys come out because I published a video ten minutes ago. Showing you guys what's going on here right now and you can come home, alright? Chewing my music. Mister Akliv. The Yoruba singer, boy. Mister Fields, okay, my Azizi, Yoruba singers. Can't get better than this here, boy. So the celebration continuing, man. Who remember this smile, dude? Smile, smile, this is more. You may be sad, you may feel you are small, man, but it's something like this. We didn't have no internet on TV. We had radio and only games on the cold sound to celebrate, man. My good job, give me more amigo. Fun time here, man, everybody done come out to this up. I hope you guys enjoy. I wanna thank you for the privilege of our time, take care of you and each other. God bless you all. Be safe. And I will see you all on the next adventure.